...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and freedom for all.
Gracious heavenly Father, Creator of the universe, Author of truth, we come to you today and ask for your blessings upon this county. Blessings upon the families represented here in the county and in this room. We ask that you replace fear with hope. Father, we ask that you help us make the right decisions with regard to these votes. And Father, we thank you for everything that you do for us and all the blessings that you bestow upon us. We bring all of our prayers to you through your son Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Morning all, today is instead of gathering as the Finney County Commission, we are gathering today as the Board of County. Um, canvassers. It's a word I can't say three times. So. Moving right into the meat of it, we have our general election.
Officially, Dory says that we need a motion to move into that Board of canvassers and I would so move.
And I will second.
All those in favor of officially a motion entering the Board of County canvassers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried and we are officially there. Alright. You gonna do it from the podium or your computer?
I am, I'm hoping, you know, with the mask on, I was hoping I would be heard better. I'm here with the microphone, so. So what we're doing today is canvassing and we've got five hundred and seventy-six provisional ballots to canvas. As usual, I grouped those into to light categories for you. I've provided you with a summary of those. And so we're just gonna go through each group of ballots and let you make a motion on each. The first group is ballot C zero zero one to C one ninety-five. All of these voters were found not to be registered. The law requires that a voter must be registered by the twenty-first day before an election, so I'm recommending that you do not accept these ballots.
Mister Chairman, with your permission, I'll offer a motion to reject the ballots number of C zero zero one through C one ninety-five.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded that we reject ballot C zero zero one to C one nine five. All those in favor of that motion?
This Chairman, this Chairman, before we vote, and I'm in favor of this, but just to, for the transparency, for full disclosure to people, are we online today?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that people totally understand uh, the process that you go through and who you search from to determine that they are not registered and so forth, just so the public totally understands how you determine they're not registered statewide.
Okay, so for actually.
Or, or anywhere else.
Right, so for all of the provisional ballots, we research each and every one of them to see, you know, what the issue was at the polls and whether or not that was just an error on the poll workers' part or in our data, and then make a recommendation as to count these or not. So for these first ones, these hundred and ninety-five ballots, we search our statewide voter registration system to see if those people were actively validly registered. People who are registered in another county are not eligible to vote in Finney County, so they would be considered not registered.
And that record that you're referencing is maintained by the Secretary of State, is that correct?
Um, they, they.
For statewide registration?
They manage the statewide system. Each jurisdiction manages their own data.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna make sure people understand.
Absolutely, we love to educate our voters.
Well, that is a thorough process is what I'm trying to point out.
Yes. Yes.
Further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, those are rejected.
So the next group of ballots is C one ninety-six through C two zero eight. The voters of these ballots had name changes and had not updated their voter registration. This ballot should count because we didn't find any other anomalies with those ballots. And the voters did complete a new voter registration application to update their record. So I am recommending that those ballots count.
Mister Chairman, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I move we accept C one ninety-six to two oh eight, the thirteen ballots.
And I would second.
All in favor of the motion to accept those thirteen ballots, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
The next group is ballot C two zero nine through C two one two. These voters voted at the wrong location, so they didn't vote the correct ballot for where they live. A couple of these were actually poll workers who forgot to vote in advance and they were not working at the location where they would normally vote. And what we do in those cases is count a partial ballot. So we compare the ballot they voted to the ballot they should have voted and we only count the races that are the same on both ballots. So I'm recommending those four ballots for partial count.
Mister Chairman, I would move that C two oh nine to through C two twelve be counted partially.
I'll second, Clifford.
All those in favor of the motion of partial acceptance of these four ballots, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
Right, the next set of ballot C two one three through C two thirty-six. These are voters who moved into Finney County from out of Finney County and did not register at their new address. So in these cases, I found that they were actively registered, but in another county. They were not eligible to vote here in Finney County, so I am recommending that you reject those ballots, C two thirteen through C two thirty-six.
Mister Chairman, I would so move.
And all second. Any further discussion?
We don't, I mean, these people obviously voted for president and they're citizens of the United States, so.
They have to.
Can they count partial for their presidential?
No, because they were actively registered in another county, they could have voted in that other county.
And you can't verify that?
We're not allowed to count it.
And, and, so, because there's no ability to same day register or verify their other vote?
That's correct. That's correct. To vote, you have to be registered in the jurisdiction where you preside, where you reside.
Yeah.
And these voters were not registered in the jurisdiction where they reside.
For purposes of president and vice president, they do reside in the country, but there's no allowance for that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
And I do have the, I do have the statutes listed there, if we need to pull up the statutes, we can do that.
Hearing no further discussion, all of those in favor of rejecting these twenty-four ballots, as the motion stated, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion's carried.
The next set of ballots is C two thirty-seven through C four oh eight, there is a hundred and seventy-two ballots. These are voters who have moved within the confines of Finney County, so they moved from one location in Finney County to another location in Finney County, but did not update their voter registration. Since they were actively registered at their old location, we do recommend that those count.
I move we accept C two thirty-seven through C four oh eight.
Clifford, second.
Discussion?
Just a question, so, that's a lot of movement within the county. And I'd say that a little bit facetiously, but, but my question is, since that, that movement has been since the primary or?
Not necessarily, so some people only vote in the presidential general.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, so these people, unless they moved in the last couple of months and voted in the primary.
Then it could be something within the last four years.
Yes, yes, and sometimes, some of these, as I looked at them, some of these people haven't voted in a dozen years or more, so.
Mister Chairman.
Okay, very good point, yeah.
Dory, looking at what we're gonna consider as the next, where they moved and it's a partial count, can we assume that what we're considering now where they moved, it did not move them away from a precinct where there was somebody that they were not eligible to vote for?
Well, it, so, what happened was these hundred and seventy-two voters voted at their new precinct, at their new location, and were given the correct ballot.
Okay.
The next group, which I think we're ready to go ahead and move on.
Well, we need to vote here. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to distract you, but I was just.
Further discussion?
Paining the difference.
All in favor of accepting these one hundred and seventy-two ballots, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now you're ready for four oh nine.
Okay, so C four oh nine through C four thirty-one, these people also moved within the county, but for some reason did not receive the correct ballot when they voted. That could be because of poll worker error, that could be because of their insistence. They could just say, I've always voted here, I wanna vote here. There's a variety of reasons that those happened. And then these are some additional ones, these twenty-three, we would recommend to count partially.
Mister Chairman, I'll offer the motion to accept for partial count, C four oh nine through four, C four thirty-one.
And second.
Any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of accepting for partial count these twenty-three ballots, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, the next seventy-eight ballots, C four thirty-two through C five zero nine. These were voters who requested a mail ballot, but voted in person. We've heard various reasons for that from different voters, some just decided they didn't wanna do mail ballots. Some claimed they never signed up for a mail ballot, lots of different reasons. But basically, what we did was we verified that their mail ballot did not get voted. And therefore, I'm recommending that we accept these seventy-eight ballots.
We hear a motion.
Chair, I'll move to accept C four through two through C five zero nine.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor of accepting these seventy-eight ballots, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried.
The next two ballots, C five ten and C five eleven, these were also people who requested a mail ballot. We actually received the mail ballot and accepted the signature on that mail ballot. But these two voters also voted in person. So, we cannot accept these ballots because we already accepted their mail ballots.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we not accept C five ten and C five eleven.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor of rejecting these two ballots, signify the same aye.
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 Opposed. Motion is carried.
The next three ballots, C five twelve through C five fourteen, these were mail ballots that were received and they did not have a signature. The signature is required. We did attempt to contact these voters. One said that they would be in by yesterday, they never showed up. The other two were called multiple times and never responded. So because those ballot envelopes were not signed, I'm recommending that you reject C five twelve through C five fourteen.
Mister Chairman, I would so move.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing now, all in favor of rejecting these three ballots, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
So the next four mail ballots, C five fifteen through C five eighteen, these mail ballot envelopes were also received unsigned. However, we did contact the voter and they did come in and sign those envelopes and we verified their signatures. So I'm recommending that those four ballots be counted.
So, Mr. Chairman, second.
All those in favor of accepting these four ballots, signify the same aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next ballot, C five one nine, this was found to be an administrative error, but, so we normally would have counted that in full, however, they were provided with the wrong ballot, so we're recommending that that be counted partial, C five one nine.
Chairman, I'll move to accept ballot C five one nine.
You're a second.
Second to do that partially.
All those in favor of a partial count for C five one nine, signify the same aye.
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 Motion carried.
The next set of ballot, C five twenty through C five forty-three, when the voters attempted to vote in person, they were not found in the poll book. There were various reasons for this, either poll worker error or an administrative or clerical error in our system. We have reviewed those. Everything is valid with those voters, there was no reason they shouldn't have been found. And so we're recommending that C five twenty through C five forty-three be accepted.
Mister Chairman, I'll offer the motion to accept those ballots, the twenty-four number.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting these twenty-four ballots, signify the same aye.
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 Motion carried.
The next three ballots, C five forty-four through C five forty-six, a photo ID was not provided. Law requires a photo ID in order for you to vote. These voters were also contacted because they are able to provide that voter ID anytime before the date of canvas. These three voters were contacted, but never did come in to provide that ID.
So move that we reject those ballots.
I'll second.
Mister Chairman, before we vote, may I ask a question?
Discussion, yes.
Dory, would you share for the public, the vote, the photo ID that you're able to accept, it's beyond a driver's license, but can you kinda share some of the other, the other documents that you may accept?
I don't have that full list in front of me right now, but it's any government issued photo ID. So this could include a driver's license, a state issued ID card, passport, concealed carry license.
Of what license?
Concealed carry.
Okay.
It would also include school IDs, or, so government issued, so your county ID. Because that's government issued or state ID.
So the, the argument, if you will, that some people can't afford a driver's license doesn't carry a lot of weight because there are a number of other things that don't necessarily cost a lot, a driver's license does, if they bring in and it meets muster, is that correct?
Yes, and actually, we did have one voter that we offered, so the, this Kansas Secretary of State office will provide a free photo ID to a free voter ID, basically.
Good.
And so we can fill out paperwork and take a picture of them, send it to the state. They do their thing and, and get back to us with that, and then we will accept that too, so that is absolutely free. We do all the light work on that, all they've gotta do is come to the office so we can take their picture and get their signature.
Good information, thank you. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Further discussion?
Well, just a quick comment, I, Mister Chairman, I found out from personal experience with an elderly person, they will even use an expired driver's license as long as it has that photo on it.
Yes, anyone over the age of sixty-five is allowed to use an expired license. They did also make concessions this year in particular because people have had difficulty getting, to get their driver's licenses renewed. So we accepted additional expired driver's licenses this year.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor of rejecting C five forty-four through C five four six, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion is carried.
Okay, so the next two ballots, C five forty-seven and five forty-eight, these people also did not provide a photo ID. One of them brought it into the office, the other one applied through the state. The state has confirmed that they received that and that we will receive the ID today. But we don't have it in our possession yet. So I would recommend that on C five forty-seven, that you accept that ballot conditionally and as long as we receive that, that photo ID, we will accept that one.
And I would have, may I offer that motion, Mister Chairman?
Will they send it to you?
Yes, they will send it through me and we'll give it to the voter.
I'll second on five four seven.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting these two ballots, signify.
No, we're just gonna accept five four seven conditionally.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, my apologies.
That way, if that ID doesn't come through, then we, we won't count that.
The motion is to accept partially, conditionally ballot five four seven. All those in favor of that, signify the same aye.
And now I'll offer the motion to accept ballot C five forty-eight.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor of accepting five forty-eight, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry, that was kinda some late breaking news this morning, so we've worked right up to the deadline trying to get these people's votes to count, so. Alright, so the next group here is C five four nine through C five five seven. These were mail ballots that we made provisional. There's various reasons for that, sometimes they moved after they submitted their application for a new ballot. So we had already sent one to the old address, and then they called and said, well, we didn't get it, we moved. And so we had to send a provisional ballot to their new address and send them the correct ballot. So what we've done on those is verified that they didn't vote that first one, that that first one never came back to us, voted. So for those, I would recommend that you accept those nine ballots.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we accept C five forty-nine through C five five six.
Clifford, seconds.
Five five seven.
Five five seven.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, shoot, yes.
I'll second on that.
Yeah, five five seven, yes.
All in favor of accepting these nine ballots, signify the same aye.
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 Motion carried.
Okay, the next two ballots, these ballots were received after the November sixth deadline. They did have a valid postmark, but the law requires the ballots to be received by that third day after election day. And therefore, I'm recommending that those two ballots be rejected.
So move, Mister Chairman.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a quick question, the ballot postmarked, Dory, was that within the timeframe that had been allowed? Was it bef, were they postmarked before November three?
Either on or before November third, they were postmarked on or before November third, but were not received by the sixth.
So we can thank the postal, postal service perhaps for these folks not being able to.
Perhaps.
They had them for a month.
Pardon?
They'd had them for a long time, mail it.
Yeah.
So we, we do, we did mail those out all the way up through October twenty-seventh. And if I remember correctly, one of them was postmarked ten thirty-one and the other one was postmarked, I think, the day before election day, so.
Okay.
But when they're coming from out of state, you know, it's hard to say.
That adds to the.
All in favor of the motion to reject these two ballots, signify the same aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the next two ballots, C five six zero through C five six one, on these, the, the signatures did not match what we have in our system. We contacted the voters, but they never did come in to cure that, so.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we reject C five sixty and five sixty-one.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor of rejecting C five six zero and C five six one, signify the same aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
The next four ballots, C five sixty-two through five sixty-five, these were found to be administrative errors where we either couldn't read correctly what was on their prior application or somebody just put the address or, or spilt the name incorrectly. So I'm recommending that those count, there was no fault on the voter.
All over that motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting these four ballots, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
Okay, the next three ballots, C five six six through five six eight, these voters were here from out of county. They have active registrations in other counties. The voters happened to be here on election day and didn't vote in advance in their own jurisdiction, so decided to vote here. But voters must vote in the jurisdiction where they reside. Therefore, I request that you reject ballots five six six through five six eight.
Mister Chairman, so move.
You're a second.
I'll second. I still, I guess it's just a, a change in state law that ought to be required so that you at least have your national vote count.
Yeah, I did ask about something similar to that, like for truck drivers. But there, there is a, a way they can do that, but there are forms that they have to fill out ahead of time.
It's like a national voter or something. Loader voter.
Not that I'm aware of, not in my discussions with the, with the Secretary of State's office.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of rejecting these three ballots, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
Okay, the next five ballots, C five six nine. Okay, the next five ballots, C five six nine through C five seven three. Um these were poll worker error, um they misselected a voter in the poll pad. So, uh we had a gentleman come in to vote and it said that he had voted earlier that morning. And he said, no, my wife was in, but not me, well, their names are right next to each other in the book. So we hit the wrong one, the poll worker picked the wrong person. Um but by him doing this ballot provisionally, we were able to go in and correct that voter credit to make sure that she got credit for voting early. And now this is um the other voters', um and that happened on just a couple of these. And the other reason, the other ones, we're not sure why they were made provisional, but we didn't find any, any anomalies, so. I'm recommending that those five ballots be counted.
Chairman, I'll have moved to accept uh C five six nine through C five seven three.
Second?
It's been moved and accepted, all those in favor of accepting these five ballots, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
Ballot C five seventy four um was voted by a transient. They insisted on voting, refused to complete a registration application, and refused to sign the poll book or the provisional envelope. So I'm recommending that that be rejected because we have no way to validate that they are qualified electors.
Mr. Chairman, I would uh move that we reject C five seven four.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to reject five seven four, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
The last two ballots, C five seventy five and five seventy six. These voters arrived at the county election office here at this building at six fifty eight PM on election night, and did not have time to get to their location, so we allowed them to vote provisionally in my office, and I recommend that those be counted.
I'll offer that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor of accepting these two ballots, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion is carried. Mr. Chairman, may I ask, Dory, a question here before we move on. Dory, the the pad, the electronic signature pad you're using in polling places, are you able to use that to compare signatures?
Definitely, yes. So um actually we used it for um the people, that we had the two ballots where they had voted a mail ballot, and then they also voted um in person. So we were able to look at the signature on that poll pad, compare it to the signature that was made on the absentee ballot application, and the envelope that came back to us with a voted ballot in it, all three matched.
Well, I'm uh, I'm gonna just state a personal experience, I vote in ward in precinct sixteen, Ward sixteen, at the, at the Southern Baptist Church. The pad that you sign is on a table surely low, there was plexiglass in the way, had a little seven or eight inch long cord attached to the stylus. And with the mask on, glasses fogging up and trying to sign that thing.
Yes.
I don't know how anybody, I couldn't read my own signature, I don't know how you could, so I.
Yeah, so and and they're not perfect on the poll pads, certainly some people do really well, others do not. Um however, there are usually some key parts of your signature that we're able to match up. And we we actually have training from the state this year, um KVI, FBI on signature verification, so. Um you know, we're able to pick out those little pieces that, and you you'd be surprised, you do better than we think you do.
Okay.
Um but as far as the poll pads, we actually um have money in the budget next year to replace our poll pads, ours are at end of life. So I think we've had those for six years now.
Put a longer cord on that pencil, will ya?
Well, yeah, well, and actually the new poll pads come on a very nice stand, so they stand up off the table. Um I also believe that they'll have um a driver's license scanner. Um so we don't have to type things in, we can scan the driver's license and be able to find people more accurately. So that'll take care of some of, some of those issues that we run across with these.
That was not a complaint, that was a concern, but thank you.
No, absolutely, and and we are aware of it and and working with it, so.
And we're gonna spend money to fix it.
Well, good.
So there you go.
You approve that budget, we.
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Go on.
I have a question that was asked of me that relates to elections, but not related to canvassing, uh what we're doing right here. And that is, Dory, how much uh have we spent or do we spend on an election like this, uh approximately? I'm not asking for a specific number, but I've been asked by two different people what our budget has been for this election.
Um so we, I think we had budgeted this year sixty five thousand, I'm not sure where we're at right now because we're still, still paying things. Um this year, just due to the volume, we did have an early board that handled voters during the early voting period, uh which was a lifesaver for my office, it allowed us to focus on the other things we needed to do to administer the election. So that was an additional cost. Um we spent a lot of extra time this year processing mail ballot applications. So there was uh some organization in Springfield, Missouri, that sent out absentee ballot applications, which is well and good. But they sent out multiple to several voters. There was one day where we got a husband and wife, ten envelopes, five each. They had applied for a mail ballot five times, mailed them to us on the same day. Um you know, I can't say if they thought they were gonna get five ballots, or if they just didn't know what it was and filled them all out. Um but we had to spend time verifying every single application that came in. And I'm gonna say we probably had over three thousand applications, um but only sent out around two thousand ballots. Um we actually had a pretty good return because we put postage on all those ballots to go out, so that's an additional expense. Um plus all the extra envelopes, printing, things like that. Um we had a pretty good return, I'm thinking we're close to eighty percent return on those mail ballots, which is very good. Better than I thought it was going to be. Um but all those people who didn't uh vote those and mail them back in, that was, you know, kind of a wasted expense.
Post- well, postage and time.
Postage and time, yes.
What do you think would it it costs to do that per vote on the mail-ins?
Well, I know just to mail the ballot out, it's a dollar twenty, a dollar forty in postage. Um the envelopes, I believe, are around twenty five cents a piece, and there's two envelopes with each one. Everyone gets a page of instructions that says, sign section one, do this in section two. Um. So yeah, I don't know, it's at least, you know, over three dollars per ballot to send those out.
Okay, that that would incl- include your time though.
That does not include any time.
That's just the actual expense, yeah. So you'd probably double that by the time you include your time report.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. We did put in, um we'll have a lot of, uh we have a lot of extra staff time this year. Um just between having the mail board, but also extra time my staff had to put in just to make things happen. So we we've never gotten three thousand mail ballot applications before. I think the most we've ever gotten back was four hundred and thirty, um at least in the records that I can look at. Um so for us to get back nearly two thousand mail ballot applications, it was, I don't wanna say a strain on us, but I mean, we we made it through, but it it wasn't um easy all, all the time, so.
Well, I feel that you uh you need a pat on the back for a well-run election. And special thanks to your crew because everywhere I've been has been complimentary for the public, uh their uh their experience, so. Outside of those, little short string on a stylus is is super well-run, so thank you, Dory.
I I do appreciate that, and we had a great team, not just the staff in my office, but the early board. Um the special boards, and these are some of the people that are gonna be on the provisional board today, processing the provisional ballots. So we've had several different special boards. Um public works and maintenance teams help us set up the locations, take equipment for us. Um you know, Sarah helped us set up a selfie stand for early voting, which people really loved. So it wa- I think it was a positive experience.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
More comment, Doc?
Yeah, again, I I am, I congratulations, I think here in the building, it was very efficient too, I like the way I voted here early. Um since eighty percent of of the rejected ballots were not registered. And and for me, it's, I don't like disenfranchising voters. We don't have same day registration, but is there any uh instruction handed to people at the time they vote these provisionals to say, here's how to register, here's how to cure your lack of registration?
So actually, everybody who votes a provisional ballot is required to fill out a registration form. And so that will get them registered in Finney County going forward.
Oh, good, so that's actively done, that's a vote.
Yes. Yes. Yes, every uh provisional ballot envelope actually has a registration form on it, and those have to be filled out when they come back to us, that way we can get them registered.
Thank you, great, great work, Dory.
Thank you.
Well, now I guess it's time for you, your staff, to start counting.
It is, we will go down and get started processing. Um I I'm not sure how long it's gonna take, um but I would recommend maybe recessing until one PM to give the board time to process uh the provisional ballots and also do the hand tally for the partial counts and anything that's not the, that's not able to be read through the tabulator. And then we'll print some reports and and see you back up here at one if if that works for each of you.
Alright. Mr. Chairman, I would offer that as a motion that we recess the board of canvassing for Finney County until one o'clock PM today, and we reconvene right here.
Second?
All those in favor, discussion first, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried, and we shall reconvene after recess, and we'll talk.
Thank you, gentlemen.